Good evening, everyone. This 7:00 PM. We're gonna go ahead and call our meeting to order. We'd like to welcome you to our Fruita City Council Meeting. Ciara, would you please call roll?
Yes, Councillor Bremen.
Sure.
Councillor Perser.
Here.
Councillor Williams.
Here.
Councillor Cray.
Here.
Councillor Miller.
And.
And Councillor Hansi.
Here.
All right, if you'd please all stand with me, we're gonna do a moment of silence and on the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'd like to take the opportunity to have a moment of silence to allow all faiths and beliefs the opportunity for a silent prayer. Thank you. If you'd please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
Uh, yes, there were two changes to tonight's agenda. Um, one was adding an executive session for the purpose of discussing the purchase of real property for a public parking lot and additional civic building space. And the second one was a change to the resolution twenty tw- two thousand twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three designating one five seven North Plum as a historic structure to an ordinance two zero two two dash thirty-one first reading due to changes in requirements for adoption of additions to the histor- historic register as part of recent land use amendments.
All right, thank you. Uh, with that, uh, do we have a motion to approve?
May we approve the, uh, adjusted agenda?
Second.
All right, Councillor Perser.
Yes.
Councillor Williams.
Yes.
Councillor Cray.
Hi.
Councillor Miller.
Yes.
Councillor Hansi.
Yes.
And Councillor Bremen.
Yes.
All right, we're gonna move into our proclamations and presentations. We've got two presentations tonight. Our first one is from our Arts and Culture Board, uh, and they're talking about their street art program. So you've got Nancy Patterson here to, uh, speak and tell us a little bit about what you guys have, uh, or what we have to look forward to.
This time. Thanks for having me. Yes. It was tricky, apparently. Um, yeah, thank you for letting me move you in on our latest. Um, the Arts and Culture Board is proposing a plan to implement an Art on the Corner type of program. Uh, we're here in the city of Fruta. And, um, we intend to model our program after successful communities Palisade, Grand, uh, Grand Junction and Moab skipping over us. Um, at any rate, by coordinating with our neighbors, um, we'll have a leg up in getting the program going, uh, in starting with their basic format. Now, the city I know has invested in, um, a number of pieces for our permanent collection. They're lovely. Um, and what, uh, this program is not intended to, uh, replace any of those pieces. Uh, we want to introduce new temporary art, uh, that will be here for a year and then rotate. So, um, our proposal is to move three of those lovely existing, uh, pieces in the permanent collection from Aspen Street, uh, to new locations where they're going to have fresh eyes. And probably we will have, uh, maybe possibly new viewers, um, and it'll enhance those, uh, appreciation. Um, in doing so, we will free up then three locations to start the temporary program, obviously, but we have a bunch. That's realistic. Um, and, uh, the, the temporary pieces, we believe, will draw locals and tourists alike to the downtown area. We've had a few casual conversations with businesses in town and, um, uh, we have interest in participating and support from Cavalcade, Best Slope, Happy Trails, Copper Club, Orbit Art Space and Farm. Just in like passing conversations. So I think that it's a, it's a project that, um, would be well received. We're currently reviewing contracts from some of these other locations and continuing them to and, um, of course, discussing details on how we would formalize the project. Our goal is to implement in the fall of twenty-three. Um, so that's coming right up. You need to get a call for artists out months in advance on something like that. So it seems as if we're, we're really planning a long way out, but it's something like to do that. Um, we feel at Arts and Culture that, um, you know, this project's in keeping with city goals for quality of, uh, place and lifestyle. And it will certainly enhance the downtown area. Fiscal impact, I think you all have seen the, the, uh, uh, cover sheet. And, uh, Arts and Culture has a little stash of money that we would like to toss at this project, um, to get it started. Now, again, with all these businesses, um, wanting to get behind the project, I think we will also be doing some fundraising and that sort of thing to, um, provide the artists with their side pens. Daniel's side pen and, uh, any costs involved in things that are just for receptions, that's I'd like to think that maybe the city would be interested in doing funding or possibly going to concrete pad, move some of our existing sculptures, um, in order to create again, lots of details that still need to be determined. Um, but, uh, I would just like to know that we have your support before we put energy into, uh, getting this thing rolling and then realizing.
All right, we're gonna start with if anybody has any questions. Does anybody wanna start with that?
Which three will be moved? Which of the three?
Be determined. Um, I had kind of envisioned, uh, there's a, a, uh, set that has been somewhat problematic. A good opportunity to move that to a new, more appropriate location. Um, and that is a pretty premier spot for a rotating piece of art. So that was my first inclination. Of course, the, um, Mulberry Street project, uh, will have an area for a sculpture and it seems to be obvious that that's the center of town and of downtown and, uh, might be another location to sell. And, and then something blanking on the other end of the downtown, whether it be a big horse, uh, or something. There are three sculptures, I believe, on that end of that block. Um, and so I'm kind of thinking it would be kind of nice to start with either end of our main downtown area and one central piece. Then as we grow, we can kind of adjust and maybe even start expanding out to some of the secondary side streets, um, in front of orbit, uh, art space that showed interest, uh, slopes, some of the others that are not directly on us. That's all down the road, but that's the plan.
Thank you.
Uh, I think she answered my question.
Oh, did she? All right. Have you, long term? So I wanna look at long term. Are you looking at anything on the south side? Cause that's the questions we always get is everything's always focused on Aspen and the downtown on this side. So is there anything in your plans for artwork on the other side?
And, and truly, that is something that to consider. There is an existing base, uh, which is not being used in the parking lot next to what will be the new dog park and, uh, in the dinosaur. Same, I think there was a sign there at one time. Um, but it's a prime location, you know, an existing state, uh, base. Whether it's to be one of our reflection moving over or at some point down the road. Maybe a second or third year down the way to
Okay, and we already have the roundabout art, so that helps with that, get that in there. So, um,
Yeah, it's a good segue, isn't it?
Yeah. So then the other question, you're looking at like three this year. Are you guys looking at like long term? Like adding one a year? Is that kind of, if you get funding and we?
Boom. Yeah, get funding. Um, that would be the ideal scenario. Um, I, I, if I'm not mistaken, uh, I think three is a good solid start and we aspire to branching out and adding.
So what is the total dollar amount that you're asking for? I mean, or approximate, because we know what construction costs are.
Very approximate. Um, typical stipends for artists. Basically, you're renting their sculpture for you. And communities do different things. Moab has seven, maybe eight hundred dollars to that artist for the year. Other communities, uh, go as high as a thousand dollars. So, you know, we certainly would have to take that into consideration as we start. How do we do that? Now, Arts and Culture does have funds to take care of the artists the first year. So that's a good starting place. Um, basins, cement, uh, concrete either needs to be cored, um, metal bases need to be designed. We have a artist in town that has volunteered, was given, uh, twelve concrete bases and he's agreed to donate them to our protective house. So those are the kind of things right now that we're, uh, exploring and of course, we do our best to reasonable budget. But sometimes you need this stuff, so I just see how that plays out.
I didn't hear a dollar amount. Yeah, I just heard you have some bases. So you're thinking?
You want a dollar amount for?
I'm just approximate what you're asking, because you're saying, hey, I, I, we're at, I'm on your support and I'm asking for, and Mike maybe I'll answer that too, because I know bases, you have to do proper, you know, foundations for them. And there's a, there's a lot to. The artist fee, that to me is a no brainer. That's an easy one. Um, as far as the bases, that's a little more.
I'm certainly happen, happy to get hard numbers for you. Um, it's probably a matter of a few phone calls. Uh, there are existing bases which we have in Grand Junction that we have talked to a few people from the Art on the Corner Program, um, and they might be willing to sell them to us.
Well, I'll, I'll make it easy for you. Where you're talking, maybe you're asking like three to five thousand probably is what you're asking.
Base, if we're needing to actually, working on existing, uh, concrete pad, whether it be sidewalk or something else, then if there's no base necessary, uh, if it's, if it's a large piece, the artist is responsible for
There's too many very, there's too many variables right now, is what you're saying. Right.
Donated, uh, you know, concrete base, or it could be something we need to purchase, which we have yet to get a price for.
And concrete right now is like, it's like interest rates. You don't know what it's gonna be like one day to the next, like.
So those are some of the things that we're discussing, uh, in regard to how we can flush out this project and, and get, uh, some additional information to really nail it down.
But are you asking for money from the city right now or just, just, yeah? So that it just in print, are we?
In principle, yes.
See this idea as being, um, something that fits into the city goals and that we would support as a council. That's really what you're asking right now, because the Arts and Culture Board has the money right now.
And if this plan with the, the quality of place and lifestyle, um, we're hoping that there would be some small amount, maybe matching monies, um, to help the project continue.
The next year, is it? Yeah.
I would hate to get this project started. We can fund it the first year and then it dies on the vine because we don't have the support we need to continue.
It's just kinda hard to say, you know, if it's five thousand, fifty thousand, kinda need some framework. So I mean, I'm comfortable saying in principle.
Yes.
Love the idea.
As I said.
But I, I'm not willing to commit, like, we're gonna fund it because we don't know what the ask is. I mean, that's kind of where I'm at.
All I'm really after this evening is to gauge your interest and know that this is a volunteer board and we will put in a tremendous amount of energy getting those answers for you, but there's not a likelihood that the project will continue. Um, we will move on to something else.
I feel like we're all pretty warm to the idea. A little bit more nudging to go, but I would say move forward with what you guys wanted.
Not nudging detail.
Yeah. She's got the nudge.
So what you'd, what you'd like from me then is estimated pricing on bases? Now, concrete pads, that's on y'all, I don't.
I don't necessarily, I think a budgetary amount is like, I, I don't wanna get into, oh, basis this much, this is this much. Just say we think we would need X number of dollars moving forward.
Every year, I think that.
Every year, and then how you choose to spend it is under your purview. And that's my comfort level. I don't wanna get into the thing, wow, this is gonna cost this much, this is gonna cost this much.
Just need an overall budget.
I mean, the nice thing is, is once the bases are installed.
That's like a one time.
So.
Maybe it's a regular base a year for the next.
The funding to add extra bases. We happily move along until we do have.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you've got support from everybody.
I think it's great.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll keep it going.
All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, with that, we're gonna move into our next presentation. We've got the, uh, Fruita Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we've got Kayla and KJ here. I don't know who's, if you're both presenting or KJ's here to supervise, is it? Yeah, I know.
Got a great PowerPoint for you guys today. I wanna make sure it's shared correctly. All right, um, well, most of you know me. I'm Caleb Bowers. I'm the Executive Director with the Fruita Chamber. Um, I just wanna thank you all for your time. I haven't had the opportunity to speak in front of some of our new city council, so I appreciate being here in front of you to give you an update on what we're working on at the chamber. Um, so just a quick recap, our vision is to cultivate a vibrant community by being a trusted advocate and viable partner for the businesses in the Grand Valley. And our mission is to grow a prosperous and sustainable business community. And our values are leadership, collaboration and engagement. Um, just a brief introduction about my role at the chamber. Uh, I've been in this director role for almost three years now. I started in March of twenty twenty, the week of the shutdown. So it was quite a time to catapult into this position. Um, the chamber wasn't in a great spot financially and it hasn't been or hadn't been for several years before I took over. Um, we actually inherited some previous debt from outstanding payroll that we owed to our processing company. We've had to cash out CDs in previous years just to make payroll. So we've definitely come a long way from where the chamber has been. Um, I know that, uh, with despite COVID, we were able to overcome a lot of those obstacles and we still were able to grow our membership further than we ever have in twenty twenty. And then it's just continued to grow from there every year. Um, I wanted to give a shout out to our staff, the people who are behind the scenes and who help support our operations. Mike Ritter is our Marketing and Communications Manager, so he helps oversee all of our newsletters, all the great graphics that you see on our social media and all the flyers that we create. Lindsay Brown is our Membership and Programs Manager, so she helps oversee all of our members and all the programs that we host. And then we also have some great support staff on our team. Uh, Todd Kumero is our Member Support Specialist, so he helps with all of the odds and ends things and does member visits when we're not able to. Giselle Genova, uh, she's actually a high school student and senior at Fruita Monument High School, and she's interning with us through the end of her school year. She's helped us with the farmer's market as our events assistant, and now she's helping with some of our year end events and then into next year's planning. And then we also have a revolving internship program in our office that's really helped supplement some of the things that we do. Uh, Caitlin McClure and Carson Eastman are both executive assistants in our office, and they're finishing their last year at CMU right now. Not pictured is our office cat Monton, so he's our office manager. Uh, but just a little bit about the chamber. Um, it's no secret, the chamber is invested in our community. We are always trying to do what we can to help support the vision and mission of our chamber, along with the city of Fruta. Um, not only do we organize some of the largest events in our community, but we also give back to our community. We have scholarships, we offer education, we do tons of engagement and outreach in our community. And then we also offer a variety of resources to help benefit our community and member businesses. Uh, we have three groups that are underneath the chamber. We have Women in Business, Veterans in Business, and our Student Membership Program. And all of those each have a committee that help oversee the groups and help plan the events. Um, in addition to those committees, we have three other committees that are very vital to the chamber. Our Government Affairs Committee helps just comb through current legislation and bills that could affect our local businesses and community. Our Events Committee helps plan some of the big events that we do, and then our Ambassadors Committee helps oversee our membership. We also have five programs. Um, our business toolbox is educational, so we help offer marketing support, human resources support, financial support. And then our Maximize Your Membership program is also, um, more of an overview on member benefits. So new and existing chamber members can learn what they can do to take advantage of their benefits. We also have our Coffee Club, which is a partnership program with the Business Incubator Center and F-Works that we host here at the commu- or Civic Center and the F-Works co-working space. Um, that's more of an educational and entrepreneurship overview. We invite businesses and industry leaders to come in and talk about how they got to where they were. Um, and then we also have our newest program, um, Next Step, which is an internship and workforce development program. It's a six-month-long course that helps teach businesses how to implement an internship program in their own office and hopefully secure long-term employment opportunities. So they get to hear from local businesses on how to create a job description, how to train your staff, how to have proper operating procedures in place, how to get funding for an intern, how to find an intern. Um, so that's a new program that we just launched that we're hoping to do twice a year. Um, and then Coffee and Community Connections is a program that we do twice a year, where we invite five to six local industry leaders to provide an update on what's happening in our community. Uh, we also host seven major chamber events every year. Monthly, we do business after hours, Welcome Thursday Friends, which is just a networking luncheon at local restaurants. We have two monthly Women in Business events and a monthly muster for veterans in business. It's new this year. And then annually, we do a women's conference, a member appreciation picnic, which are all invited to, and of course, our annual banquet. Um, in addition to all of our chamber events and programs, we also host seven community events. Uh, so the Candidate and Issues Forum is something we do for the city of Fruta, if there's a city election or any issues on the ballot. Uh, then we also do the Fruita Farmer's Market, the State of the Community Breakfast, where elected officials come in and provide updates to our business community. The Fruita Fall Festival, of course, Trick or Treat Street. And then this year, we join forces with the Downtown Advisory Board to do, uh, downtown holiday lighting. And then we also do the Parade of Lights. So in total, all of our monthly events, annual events, Fruita Fall Fest, Farmer's Market dates, we do over a hundred events per year, which is pretty crazy to think. That's like one event every three days. Um, and we do that all by supporting the local businesses and residents here in Fruta and across the Grand Valley. Um, I did provide a handout in the original application that kind of breaks down all of these events a little more in depth. Uh, but if any of you need that, I'm happy to send it over. Uh, I wanted to just briefly comb through our financials. Um, in our twenty twenty-one profit and loss, in our twenty twenty-two year-to-date comparison, it actually didn't show our current year-to-date net profit. So as of today, after all of our Fall Fest expenses have come out, year-to-date net profit is actually four thousand seven hundred. Um, and then in reference to the twenty twenty-one financials that you guys were able to view, our net income shows that we made forty-seven thousand dollars in twenty twenty-one. While that would be great, um, twenty thousand dollars of that was actually for the PPP loan. It is, it shows up under other income in our financial statement. Um, so we've actually broken that out in our future financial statements just to show that it's actually a PPP loan and not that additional twenty thousand dollars in net profit. Um, so our net income was actually closer to twenty-seven thousand dollars last year, uh, which was great also. Um, but again, there was a lot of factors that played into that. In twenty twenty, as we all remember, we had to cancel Fruita Fall Festival. And we had about ten thousand dollars invested into the twenty twenty-one Fall Fest that carried over from twenty twenty into twenty twenty-one. Um, so that was event expenses that we didn't have, that we normally would have. Um, and then with inflation, increases in generator expenses, electrical needs, traffic control, we had an increase of about nine thousand dollars for expenses for Fall Fest, um, this year compared to last year. Uh, so just to kind of compare Fall Fest expenses in general, we had an increase of almost nineteen thousand from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. So it was definitely a big hit for our office this year. Um, and then taking into consideration all of the events that our staff does do, we have three full-time employees and one part-time employee with a budget of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, which isn't very much. Uh, we are a nonprofit and, you know, we love the work we do, but um, it's definitely a small and tight budget for us to run the operations that we do. And we couldn't do that without the support of the city and the funding that we receive from you guys. So we really appreciate that. Uh, I also just wanted to highlight our membership a little bit. Our current numbers are four hundred and eighty active members across the Grand Valley. New members year-to-date, we've added a hundred and twenty-one new members. And just to compare, last year, we added a hundred and twenty-three. So we expect to surpass that goal this year. Um, just some of the key benefits that chambers provide to their local community and that the Fruita Chamber provides to the city of Fruta and our community. Uh, we really contribute to a quality of place. Chambers are catalysts and the facilitators behind the success of businesses in our community and help support our economic development. Uh, we support economic health because we can help brand the city as a pro-business community and business-friendly, which encourages other businesses to want to move here, people to play here and to work here. Uh, we also do a lot of building within our community, uh, bringing it back to all of those one hundred and twenty days of events that we host. We also field visitors and calls daily. So we always get people walking in, asking what to do, calling, asking where to go. Um, and we really love doing that because then we can refer our member businesses and help, um, just those visitors have a great experience when they come to our community. We also have new resident welcome bags. Um, so that's something that we offer in our office where people can come in and grab a welcome bag that has a bunch of goodies of things in Fruta, some member swag, handouts, maps and all of those good things. Um, and then we also provide connection across the Grand Valley. So sometimes when Fruta might not have a presence, the Fruita Chamber wants to be there and make sure that Fruta always has a presence and a voice across the western slope. We've got a great partnership with the Palisade Chamber. Uh, we've developed a strong partnership with Business Incubator Center, Small Business Development Center, the Grand Junction Chamber, GJEAP Workforce Center, CMU and the Mesa County Valley School District. And I also serve on the Fruita Tourism Advisory Board, so I've been able to participate in the CTO grant process with the partnership between Fruta and Palisade and just really helping market our local businesses and highlighting what's important here in our community. Um, Fruita Fall Festival is probably one of the biggest events in the valley. It estimates we bring in forty to fifty thousand people per year. Um, and we bring in those visitors to Fruta, those one hundred and fifty vendors that come in, help provide tax revenue. And it's all organized by our small staff of three point five people and a huge variety of community volunteers that put in their time and energy to help make it possible. Uh, we also had the Fruita Historical Preservation Society participate for the second year in hosting the History Fair at Fall Fest, which was phenomenal. Uh, it sounded like they had a lot of great visitors this year, and then the chamber also helped, um, kind of run helping get additional money for the coloring book that the his, um, the Fruita History Fair wanted to print off. It's a history coloring book for, uh, Fruta. So we were actually able to help them secure enough money to print five thousand coloring books this year, which was I think more than double what they originally expected to print. So we were really proud of that. Um, and when I say Fruita Fall Festival brings in visitors, it's from all over the world. We actually got this really great email after Fall Fest that I wanted to highlight to you guys from a local, or a couple out in Germany. Uh, it said, "On Friday, September twenty-third, we visited your wonderful Fruita Fall Festival, and it was a highlight of our visit to the US. We just wanted to make a short break, but we stayed the whole day with so many wonderful and friendly people that Fruta stays in our heart as a special day of our vacation. Although we enjoyed Yellowstone and Arches National Park, it is days like the one in your town with so many beautiful, funny, outhouse race, delicious tacos and warm experiences that give the true spirit to traveling. So today at home in Hirsching, near Munich, Germany, we took this picture to send it to you with the kindest regards from Monica and Walter. Thank you for a great day in memory." So I think that just speaks volume to how our experience that we provide in Fruta really just speaks to people. Um, to be compared to Yellowstone and Arches National Park is pretty neat for me. So I was very proud to get that email and this couple was really sweet to share that with us. So I was very proud to get that email and this couple was really sweet to share that with us. Uh, the fruit of farmers market, of course, uh, we've worked really hard to grow that market. It went from an average of twenty five vendors to over sixty vendors on a weekly basis. Uh, we've seen continued and increased traffic. I talked to a lot of our local produce vendors on the last day of the market on a cold October twenty ninth day. And uh, they said it was their best year yet. Some who've been participating for so many years, they said that they were astounded at how well they they did this year at the market. They've seen a lot more repeat customers coming through. And some of the feedback that we get from our vendors is that at the fruit of farmers market, they get the community customers that come back on a regular basis. They know where to find them and they're always coming to see them. Um, so that's really good to hear that our market is that well, our vendors do that well at our market. Um, some have even said that they do as good at the fruit of farmers market as they do at the Palisade Market, which those of you who have been there, you've seen the traffic that they get. So to s- to hear that those numbers are pretty equal for our produce vendors is a really good sign for us. Uh, we also helped host the final Fourth Friday in partnership with the downtown advisory board this year, and it was a huge success. Uh, we did the food and brews portion, so we helped bring in food trucks and then we did the beer garden. And I remember that day, it was pouring rain. We were all huddled under a tent. And I did not know what to expect because I thought we were going to get rained out. Uh, but the sun came out and we quadrupled uh the audience that I had expected. So um food trucks sold out, our art vendors did great. It was just such a successful partnership and community event that we hope to continue every year. Uh, and then just looking ahead at growth and opportunities for the chamber and within the city of Fruta. Uh, I'm sure you've seen, we've had a lot of businesses open up and uh development happening. And so the chamber is here to support those new and existing businesses here within Fruta and across the Grand Valley. We also have the shop fruit of gift certificate program, which supports um any fruit of businesses or fruit of chamber members. You can purchase a gift card and they can be redeemed at any of our businesses. Um, we're actually going to go digital in 2023, so we'll have a digital gift card program. So people can purchase gift cards and email them to their friends or to their family. So it'll make it a lot easier for people to be able to keep those dollars local. So we're excited about that growth. Um, and then last, we also launched a, the Fruta Area Chamber Foundation this year. It's a new entity, five oh one C three nonprofit, and the purpose of that is to support education. It'll directly help benefit our Fruta Scholarship Program. In the past, we've had three five hundred dollar scholarships that are eligible for all Fruta students. So whether they live in City of Fruta Limits or they attend Fruta Monument High School, um, that's student services, Fruta FFA, or um a business major scholarship. And as some of you may know, five hundred dollars doesn't do a whole lot. Well, everything helps. Um, we want to do what we can to help grow that program. Uh, so we've actually raised enough money to where we can double that and give out three one thousand dollar scholarships for next year. And then the plan is to continue to add to more scholarships from there. Uh, our plan is to do a female entrepreneurship scholarship that our Women in Business Committee will help support. And then we also want to see more scholarships for the trade industries. So the Chamber Foundation will uh directly support those efforts. Um, and I can brag all day about the chamber and the work that we're doing, but I think it really resonates to hear it from our local businesses. So we partnered with one of our local businesses and chamber members, fourteen K Media, to do some testimonials. So I just wanted to play this short clip for you guys. Might have to screen share one more time. I don't know if the sound works. Do you guys know how to make the sound go on to there? I can turn it up. It's just a
I think if Caleb, I think if we play it from this one, we can
Okay.
Or you put the microphone down by it, you can do that.
You can do that.
Yeah, you play video, she'll play sound.
You can either hear it or see it.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome for questions. Anybody want to ask anything or make a comment? Who wants to start? Anybody?
I'm a big fan. He already knows that.
Most of you are chamber members, so I appreciate it.
There are numbers for about approximately how many people visit the farmers market, you know?
I don't. Um, that'd be something I'd really like to explore though, on how we can measure that. Um, there's just been such an increase in traffic. I know when we tried to you know, just count with a a number counter app on my phone, I think we had counted six hundred in a day. And that was early on in the season. So I'd estimate probably well over a thousand on our bigger days.
I think that was a great presentation and lots of helpful information. So thank you very, very much. I am curious about farmers market. I love it and I loved it even more when it was in doubt it here. And I'm just curious about I I don't know if that was a chamber decision or a city decision or both. I'm just curious about your feelings about where it is now, if it would ever, if you'd ever consider bringing it back, just the kind of rationale for moving it, all of those aside from COVID.
Sure.
From that.
Yes. Yeah, obviously COVID was the number one reason. Um, it was a mutual decision between the city and the chamber. With the growth that we've seen in the market, we've definitely outgrown Civic Center Park. And so in order to move it back downtown, we'd have to expand into the parking lot or even into the road, uh, which isn't cheap to close down the road. So um, it could be a possibility. It's something that we ask our vendors every year if they would prefer to keep it at Reed Park or move it back. Um, and surprisingly, the majority, uh, well over sixty percent of our vendors have voted to keep it at Reed Park. Uh, they just really like having it on the grass. There's more shade access. And so I think it is a little bit more desirable. But we do have some vendors that feel we'd get better traffic if we were in downtown Fruta. Uh, but we're working closely with the city to work on some marketing materials, maybe some banners and things like that, uh wayfinding signage. So I think that there's definitely opportunity to help push more traffic towards Reed Park if that's its permanent home.
Thank you.
I can answer part of that too. As part of it was the grass too, I know, because we had issues with killing the grass with all the different events that we have down here too. So I think it's it, it was a good compromise, I think, for everybody to keep all the different events we've got going on, you know, vibrant down here.
Hey Kayla, this is random, but um that the uh coloring book that you guys did with the Historic Society. I remember when we had our debriefing from Fall Fest, they brought in a bunch of that were left over. And like a couple of us took them to our businesses and stuff, but it dawned on me how neat those would be if we had them in some of the area restaurants for like the kids. Do you know where they're at and how to get access to them? Or is that something I should run in the Historic Society about? But just since it came up, I figured I would say something about it.
Yeah, I think we have five thousand downstairs.
In this very building. We're just working
Four thousand nine.
Right now, like that's, that's a
I was, I was, oh, really? Yeah, I was thinking about
They're going out to the
Would be to have them at restaurants when the kids come in to to so I almost gave the ones that we have at our shop up because of that.
So it's kind of like twofold because we have the coloring books and then we're also working on the updated pamphlets for the um like the walking tour. So we kind of wanted to wait and do like approach businesses with both and also have um like a display opportunity because it's always better if you have something that's contained. And you know, um, rather than just sitting out on the, you know, counter, a lot of businesses don't like having that stuff scattered around. So short answer is we're working on it. But the chamber, man, their help was, they went above and beyond. It was just really amazing. Um, the business support that Caleb pulled together. I think we asked for like two thousand initially and we were able to print five thousand. So that's really cool.
I I totally commend you and your staff for everything you guys have done. I've worked with the chamber pretty heavily for eighteen years and the last three years has been by far the smoothest that chambers ever ran. It's very professional and you guys do a great job and it's, it's always nice to know that you guys are out there as the face of the town for us. You do it, you do a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
I got, I'll do a random question like James did. So how do you like your new liaison from the city?
Last meeting because I was in Denver. But uh, that is actually a segue. And I think this may fall on me. How much opportunity is there or should there be opportunity for greater communication between the business community in the city on things that are happening? And I say, you know, as a liaison, I think, you know, I need to be more active in that. But I think I can kind of bring from the city standpoint. Um, but is there opportunity to get business communities more needing something or concerns about something kind of getting a unified voice? And trying to open up that communication a little bit more. Um, it's something I would like to see more of. And I say that looking at myself, realizing that I need to be part of this, the solution to this. So, but that is something, you know, kind of moving forward. I think I need to kind of step up on it and work with you on.
I think that would be great.
All right. Any other questions for Kayla? All right. Well, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
All right.
Your time.
I never ask questions like that. Have to keep it light a little bit. All right, we're going to move into our public participation. Uh, so this section is set aside for the city council to listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on the agenda. Uh, the city council generally will not uh discuss the issue or take any official action. So with that, uh, we're going to open it up to public comment. Staff have anything to public comment on? Is there anybody online that would like to leave public comment?
No comments online, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that, we're going to close public uh participation and move into our consent agenda. So these are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time before they come before council for final action. Uh, they'll all be approved by a single motion. So we're going to open that up for public comment. Is there anybody that'd like to speak on something on the consent agenda? Hearing none here. Are you seeing anybody online?
No comments online.
All right, we're going to close public comment on that, bring it back to council. Are there any questions? Uh, or do we have them?
I have a question. Um, I'll to recuse, I can recuse myself from one item. Is that true?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
I recuse, recuse myself from six B because I'm the chair of the board that that Grant would go to.
All right. Any other questions or do we have a motion?
I have a question just for understanding. What's the benefit of getting on the historical register? What's like, why is someone wanting to report their house to be on the historical record have bigger challenges to deal with when it comes like renovation and stuff like that?
So they want to keep the history, I think is the main thing is they want to keep that, but I don't like.
Yeah, Henry Hemphill can answer that if you'd like to.
All right, Mr. Mr. Hanty and yes, uh, the opportunity for someone that owns property or a building or a business in town that has some historical uh relevance to the town um can do so and have that recognized, you know, in in this case, it's the age of the building and the shape that it's in that's, you know, kind of uh unique to Fruta. It was built, you know, a hundred and twenty plus years ago. And the folks that own it, Michelle Coles, um, and the people that she bought it from, which was uh Stephen Denise Height all have a significant impact into kind of the historic relevance of the city of Fruta. And so it's a mechanism for them to like recognize the building and hopefully keep it like that for many years to come with someone purchasing it, taking it to the ground.
Do they go in the national registry?
Uh, they can. This would probably be the first step. You should go local, then state, and then national if there was some really high uh historical influence there.
Thanks. All right. Any other questions on consent or do we have a motion?
I moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second. Is there any other comments? Hearing none, uh, could you please uh poll council?
Counselor Williams.
She said me.
Oop.
All right, I didn't hear. Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Okay.
I didn't hear. Counselor Cry.
All except B, yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Counselor Bremen.
Yes.
And Counselor Purser.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, with that, uh, we're going to move into our um hearings. So we've got uh two legislative hearings tonight and our first one is resolution twenty twenty two dash thirty. Uh, and it's uh mending the twenty twenty two budget for supplemental appropriations. And we've got our assistant city manager Shannon Basson here to present.
Uh, yeah, as always, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and uh city council for allowing me to present this agenda item. Uh, resolution uh twenty one thirty is just a supplemental uh budget appropriation to um add funds to the general fund, the capital projects fund and the trash fund as outlined in the cover sheet. Uh, with this uh budget amendment, we're adding twenty nine thousand five hundred forty five dollars to the general fund. Um, out of that, we have a ten thousand dollar donation that was received for the Mike Peddles Chicken Festival. We also received uh seventy five hundred dollars, a little over seventy five hundred dollars for work that we helped the Sea of Grand Junction with on their uh G Road project. Um, we have two hundred dollars in designated fund balance for the Vietnam. Um, Vietnam War Memorial over on the south side of Fruta. Um, they, each year they purchase flags using some of that fund balance, so two hundred dollars for that. And we also have uh about twelve thousand dollars in revenues that we received from the eighty twenty program, the sidewalk replacement program um that we've received and we can uh use on additional portions for the sidewalk replacement program. And the capital projects fund, as we discussed at our last budget presentation, we did receive quotes uh for the fencing for the dog park that'll be located on the south side of Fruta. So this appropriates fifty thousand dollars in uh post-impact fees, just to allow us to enter into not an agreement, but to sign the quote with the contractor that provided that bid. And then in the trash fund, we have uh twenty four thousand dollars to help us cover additional expenses uh throughout the remainder of the year because we have revenues that we throughout the remainder of the year because we have revenues that we received in excess of projected revenues this year. Nothing else to add. As always, staff recommends approval of this motion, but always happy to take any questions.
All right, with that, because it is a legislative hearing, we're going to open it up to the public for public comment. So if there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item, that would be the, your opportunity. I'm seeing none. Are you seeing anybody online?
No comments online.
All right, we'll close public comments, bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none from council. So do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty, amending the twenty twenty-two budget to appropriate funds in the general fund, the capital projects fund and the trash fund for special events, road repair and maintenance, park supplies and equipment, the sidewalk replacement program and for trash collection services.
We got a first and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, would you please poll council?
Counselor Cry.
Hi.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Counselor Bremen.
Yes.
And Counselor Purser.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
I want to vote. I approve of it.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our second legislative hearing. It's the twenty twenty-three annual budget. And so again, we've got Shannon Basson here presenting on this one.
Yeah, good evening again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to present this agenda item tonight. Super exciting. This is actually our last two formal budget presentations until it goes for adoption at our next city council meeting on December sixth. So super excited to go over these and also cover some of the changes since we've seen since the last draft. As we discussed at our last meeting, we included a draft at the end of October for the draft budget. Since then, we've updated in, we've added quite a bit of supplemental information. So before I got into my formal PowerPoint presentation, I just kind of wanted to walk through members of the audience and maybe those online of how they can kind of navigate our budget, but also see some of the additional changes. So I actually just pulled up our website here. Went to administration. And under finances, our budget. And since it's a very large document, I believe four hundred and fifty pages, I just went ahead and opened it before this. But we've added a lot of information since those first drafts. If you remember at September workshop, we first presented the twenty twenty-three recommended budget in October. We put out another draft and since then we've added some new chapters I just wanted to briefly cover before getting into the presentation. In addition to the cover sheet, I also put, I included just some small changes that have, that have happened to the budget since our last draft went out. Those are summarized in the in the attachment to the cover sheet, pretty small changes, a few service contract items and administration, the sewer fund, adding the police officer as we discussed in our last presentation. And also we've added a few other miscellaneous expenses as benefits change. We just had open enrollment. We had some changes in our health insurance cost, stuff like that. So we've updated that. So not a whole lot of fiscal impact, but there are some. As far as supplemental information, we've actually included a lot in this draft. New in the twenty twenty-three budget is a reader's guide to the budget document, and that's just right before you get into the introduction and right before you get into the funds. It just provides a quick summary of all the chapters, the introduction, the policies and procedures, the budget overview, the funded department overviews, and this year we also added an appendix. I always like to just pull up the bookmarks so you can easily go to each chapter. For the final adopted budget, I'll actually bookmark every program. Right now it's just done by fund and department. If you're looking for something specific, you can use those. And if you're looking for something specific in the general fund, you can just click down on that and go from there. So yeah, so that is new. Also added a table of contents that has live links. So if there's anything you want to click on, you can go there. Policies and procedures, this was not in prior draft, but this is just all of our financial policies, which you've probably seen before. We go over budget process, the different types of funds, the basis of budget accounting, city goals and core values. And new to this year, we actually included information in our pay and compensation plan as the council has requested. So if you want to learn more information on our pay and compensation plan, you can do so on that. Actually, I'm actually going to cheat and go straight to that. Oh, wrong one. And basically everything that Mike and I covered at our last meeting can be found on this page. And for the purposes of transparency, we even included our pay and compensation document in the appendix. So if you want to go read that, that's the document we use internally. When we do make a pay decision, stuff like that, you can go ahead and do it there. But yeah, this can be fun and are found in the policies and procedures. And then also the budget overview is new. This provides a summary of all funds, which I will go over in my presentation tonight. And then I also add an appendix which has a glossary and just any terms you see, like what's CIP mean? You can go to the appendix, learn that, what's C dot, et cetera. If you ever come across a term too, that's not in the appendix and it should be, definitely just let us know and we'd be happy to throw those out. But I always figured as I was kind of going through, especially when I first started reading these documents, I'm like, I need to figure out what that means. What's capital outlay? I don't know, but it is in the appendix now. So with that, I'm going to switch over to my presentation. As I was discussing, this is our final two formal presentations before the budget goes for adoption at our December sixth meeting. So tonight we'll be covering economic health and development and also be providing a traditional budget presentation on the all-fund summary. So a lot of charts, a lot of graphs, a lot of pie charts. I hope everyone is excited. So absolutely. So just for members of the audience and people online, just kind of go over what we've covered so far. When the city council met in August to go for a strategic workshop, council identified a number of priority projects to accomplish over the next two to four years. And since then, that strategic plan has really guided our decision-making as far as the budget process. So although we've been working on the budget almost all year, it feels like a lot of the work began, you know, once we really hammered out those priority areas and really identified what this council wants to prioritize in the future. As far as public hearings, this is just things we've covered so far. September workshop was our first overview of the city manager's recommended budget. October eighteenth, we discussed capital projects and infrastructure and core service delivery. Our October workshop, we discussed outside agency funding requests and a few other miscellaneous items that we needed some additional guidance on. November first, we discussed quality of place, community wellness, which mostly focuses on parks and recs projects, police department and a few other areas. And we also discussed personnel and employee retention. Tonight, we'll discuss economic health and development and also give the overview. We have set aside some time next week if you're interested to talk about any final issues before the budget goes for adoption, but we'll leave that up to you if you see anything that you'd like to discuss. And then at our next meeting, the budget adoption includes four steps. We always joke, it's very anticlimactic. We go through all this work and then we're standing up here for probably less than five minutes when the budget is actually adopted, which is true. So at our next meeting, formal meeting, the first step is to approve the fees and charges for twenty twenty-three, adopt the budgets for next year, appropriate the money and then set the mill levy. Don't anticipate any changes to the mill levy. It's just, I think by law or by charter, one of the two, we're required to set that by December seventh, which normally at least the first Tuesday falls in that day. All right, so I'm going to jump right into economic health and development, and I figured a good way to kick this off would just be to discuss a year in review for our community development department. Through October twenty-two, our planning department has issued seven hundred and forty-four planning clearances. Out of those, eighty-eight have been new residential clearances, which is single-family attached, single-family detached, and also manufactured homes, some of the ones we're seeing on on the south side of Fruta. Ironically, none of that is multifamily. The Mason Mulberry Apartments, which you received a tour of this year or earlier this evening was got their planning clearance last year. So out of that eighty-eight, it's all single-family or manufactured. Also out of the seven hundred and forty-four, we've had two commercial remodel clearances. Now, this is a wide variety of planning clearances. It can be everything from interior remodels to change of use. The Cupcake Shop on, on the circle is a good example. That was a change of use. So they received a commercial remodel clearance for that or a commercial clearance for that. Can also be utility upgrades, et cetera. We've seen twenty-two commercial ones for in planning this year. And also we have ninety-one currently short-term rental permits, which includes everything in the triangle, but also outside of the triangle, which allows short-term rentals in some of those HOA communities and non-HOA communities as well. Goals for next year as far as community development, it's the goal of the department to implement the full system of the cloud-based development review software that we purchased this year. This is a project we've been talking about for a few years now, and I think staff is very excited about. Once this is fully implemented, not just our employees, but also outside agencies will be able to go online and provide comments on whether it's, you know, subdivision reviews, whatever it may be, and provide comments online. It's all consolidated in that online format, which will help out quite a bit. In the budget next year, as far as the cost for that, we have about thirty-five thousand dollars set aside. We did purchase it this year through a competitive bid process and paid about thirty. We got a discount for the startup and that includes the development review software, but also the short-term rental module and the building inspections module, which will help them out as well. The biggest change for our community development department next year is definitely the addition of the building inspections division. When you go through the budget, there's about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars set aside for that program. Most of that is just startup costs, you know, paying for computers, equipment, ladders, tools, et cetera. And we do have two point seven five full-time employees budgeted for that program. That'll just allow our chief building officials some flexibility because we're not sure when there will be a need or how soon there will be a need for building inspectors. But they have some flexibility on when they can hire them, whether it's early in the year or later, like March, April, May, et cetera. So that is the biggest change to our community development department. Shifting our focus, economic development, this is straight from the strategic plan. It is our goal next year to really formalize or and review some of those agreements with our economic development partners such as the Chamber, GJEPP, Business Occupant Center, and kind of determine expectations and to align goals with those. Also, as far as a specific budget number for economic development, we have ten thousand set aside for GJEPP next year, which is coming from the Economic Development Fund and thirty thousand dollars set aside for the Fruta Area Chamber of Commerce, which is budgeted out of the general fund. As we discussed also at the October workshop, we are dedicating one-third of the new lodging tax to be set aside for future economic development efforts. So if an opportunity comes up like a business needs help, like getting a match for a state program or we can help them in some other way, we do have some money set aside in the Economic Development Fund. Of course, one of the biggest issues we're working on is housing next year, and I kind of tie that into economic health and development. Again, these are from the strategic plan and, you know, our goals include utilizing the study that we received from EPS to create the formal housing program and create policies around that light tech projects, which we've seen in the past. As far as a fiscal impact, it's pretty low. Beginning next year, we also decided that we are setting aside one-third of the new lodging tax for housing strategies. Now, of course, council can decide any year how they'd like to spend that three percent, whether it's on economic development, business retention or attracting them or housing or public places, you have the ability to determine how we're using those dollars each year. I think our goal is this year to kind of build up a little bit of a fund balance. So if something comes up that is appropriate, then we can spend those dollars on. So setting aside a third of the new lodging tax for that. And some of the strategic plan, just establish strategic goals for workforce housing and finalize the housing authority for as a limited tool to assess proposed tax payment for low-income housing proposals. So that's actually all I have on economic health and development. If you have any questions, I can go on through to the twenty twenty-three budget overview.
Because this is a public hearing, you're probably going to have to go through everything. We'll open up for public comment and then bring it back for questions.
Yeah, I was going to do after this presentation, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay.
All right.
Yeah, it's all, it's all one. You just broken it up into.
Oh, all right.
In the past.
Where it goes into the all-budget overview. If you had any questions on economic health and.
All right. So am I hearing this right? So
we'll open it up.
Comments on this now and then we'll open up after he presents on the next half, correct?
Yeah, you can do comments at both points. We're just.
Okay. You're just breaking it in at two. But let's do it. I want to do it the right way. So we'll open up our public comment. If anybody has comments on this presentation, now's the time to speak on that. I'm not seeing any. Have you seen any online?
No comments online, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that, we'll close public comment on that. It's part of this and bring it back to council. All right. Anybody have questions for Shannon? Go ahead.
I love the Reader's Guide.
Oh, great.
Even the keyboard shortcut, being the nerd, I was like, oh, that's how you do that.
Yeah, yeah.
It's nice. Thank you.
Yeah, accessibility, I think is great. I even tried it out. I downloaded it as a PDF and tried it out. Read the whole thing aloud to you, although it pronounces it Fruta. So we got to get with someone on Adobe with that, but.
Hundred percent. But no, I think that was, I liked the new additions with the policy and procedure.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Oh, sorry.
No, I'm just making sure nobody else has any comments. All right, let's, let's head into the next.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. This is probably by far the most traditional budget presentation that I will give. This is a summary of the all-fund summary, but there is a lot of great information in the all-fund summary. So yeah, happy to present this information to you tonight. Starting off with fund balance and kind of where we see our year-end balances to be at the end of the twenty-three, twenty-three budget, assuming everything gets completed. You know, Counselor Bremen has a great question. Last year, we're going through the budget process and he said, should we have this much money in fund balance? And I, that was a great question. And since then, we've been actively trying to spend down some of that money, but you know, due to delays and shortages and everything else, we've been having a hard time, but we still have some of these projects on the books and we're very excited to see some of them actually come to fruition, like the Pine Street Bridge, et cetera. So hopefully we'll be spending some of that down. But yeah, as the budget currently sits, we do anticipate spending at a deficit and actually most funds, mostly because we have fund balance to support spending at a deficit. And also we need to get some of these projects done. So everything you see up in this presentation is in the all-fund summary. So if there's anything you want to refer back to, you definitely can. But yeah, between our governmental funds, which is our funds that, you know, provide your traditional government services funded through taxes, et cetera, we're spending at about three million dollar deficit with most of that going to capital and capital equipment. Enterprise funds are funds that are mostly just, well, all funded through user fees and also some intergovernmental revenue. No spending out of fund balance for those, but we do have an additional surplus in our sewer fund of a hundred and seventy-one thousand. So that brings our totals ending fund balance change from what we estimate twenty twenty-three to be to about two point eight million dollars. All right, so revenues and expenses and this, this presentation is kind of broken up into revenues and getting specific and then expenses and specific and then ending on kind of capital. So this is just a overview of the last four years as far as revenue and expenses. You know, our largest source of revenue continues to be tax revenues. It's first, it's the city sales tax, all by the county sales tax, then it's traditionally property tax as well. So over the last five, six years, we've seen some pretty significant growth in city sales tax and especially county sales tax. And some of that has been due to the implementation of online sales tax collections, but also destination sales tax collections. I think some of it this year is definitely due to inflation and rising cost of goods and services. So we do continue to see year-over-year increases, but maybe some of the reasons have changed. So you can kind of see as our revenues have increased over the past couple of years, our expenses have as well. And the purple lines over there is just our deficit. That's what we're spending on capital projects, capital equipment next year. Again, out of that twenty, out of the twenty-seven point three million dollars in revenues that we're projecting, this is excluding transfers among departments. Forty-seven percent of that is for taxes. Twenty-seven percent is for charges for service such as, you know, sewer fees, fees for trash collection services, user fees at the Fruta Community Center. And then twenty-four percent is intergovernmental revenue like grants, et cetera. Tax revenues, as I was just discussing, we're anticipating about twelve point nine million dollars in tax revenues, which is an increase of six percent compared to our budget this year, but it's actually a decrease when we compare to where we'll be at the end of this year, just due to some of those inflationary impacts, anticipating maybe a decrease in spending among residents as as you know, cost of goods and services continue to increase. All the tax revenues, this this chart just kind of shows where those fall. Again, city sales tax is our largest source of revenue. I think it's up ten I think it's up ten percent over last year currently, followed by county sales tax, property taxes, and then some other specific taxes like county sales tax for public safety, franchise fees, et cetera. Intergovernmental revenue is another very large source of revenue for all funds. We do anticipate a fifteen percent increase from twenty twenty two and a six hundred percent increase over twenty twenty two estimated revenues. That's just because we're carrying a lot of grants forward into next year. So out of the six point four million dollars, we have about five point six million dollars for grants. And this this table over here to the right is in the all fun summary and it breaks out all of the grants that we've received. All these grants have been received. We're not applying for them or anticipate being awarded them. They have just all been received and can be used at next year. Charges for services is our second largest source of revenue between all funds. And again, this is just one residents pay for a service such as trash sewer, user fees at the community center. We do anticipate about an increase of four percent when compared to where we'll be at the end of this year. And most of that is due to rate changes in our trash fund. As we discussed earlier, waitman waste management requested a eighteen percent increase in prices just for them. This year, we aren't increasing of our administrative costs. We're only increasing, you know, what we pay for the contractor. So residents will see a pretty steep jump in trash collection services next year from fifteen thirty to seventeen seventy, and that's for your traditional unlimited trash. And actually, we're gonna, everyone who's also been converted to the ninety six gallon container, they'll probably stay at that same rate as well, I think, is how we have it budgeted. Sewer race going up two percent in accordance with our rate study from fifty to fifty one dollars. And those are the biggest changes when we talk about user fee changes next year. We also have a lot of miscellaneous revenues in all funds. We have been seeing a lot of interest earnings this year, which is encouraging. So you'll see kind of when we compare to previous years, some of the money we have been sitting in the bank is finally actually making money off of it. And then licenses includes like business licenses, short term rental licenses and fines and assessments like, you know, stuff related to court, et cetera. So with that, if there's no questions on revenues, I think I will move on to expenses.
Yeah, we'll present on all of it and then we'll come back.
I need to get a drink real quick, Mr. Mayor. So twenty twenty two expenses excluding transfers, we have about thirty million dollars. Sixteen point five is for operations and then eleven point six for capital. And then we have about two million dollars set aside for debt. That's for the debt we owe on the wastewater reclamation facility and also the Fruit Community Center. This is a, this bar graph is just kind of shows year to year comparison of operations, expenses as well as capital on debt over the past couple of years. You've, you'll see that they've remained pretty similar. I think for operations, it's usually, it's usually sixty percent of the budget and then capitals increase over the last two years because we're trying to really really finish up a lot of the projects that we've identified. So we've been spending a lot of that fund balance on capital. Operating expenses. So yeah, sixteen point five million. This is a decrease when compared to the twenty twenty two budget, but an increase of ten percent when compared to twenty twenty two estimated actuals. The decrease can be explained by the contingency that we set aside in this year's budget for the Maple Street Bridge project and also Reed Park. You know, if I think we were at a place where we were ready to go to build for either one of those projects, which we're getting very close to, we could have potentially used that contingency. We put it in the budget in case we didn't get specific grants, which we haven't received any yet. So the contingency was in there. But that explains the decrease of the operational expenses. You'll see there to left personnel expenses have increased. We do have five new employees in the budget next year. Three of them in the building inspections department, one in police department and one in the administration department. And then professional services and supplies have also increased. Out of personnel, we have nine point seven million dollars set aside for salary benefits, fringe benefits. Purchase services, four point four million. These are things like professional services, engineering, legal fees, auditing services, et cetera. And also including a purchase service is about trash collection services, which I think is going to exceed one million dollars in next year's budget by the time they add the additional rate increase. And operating expenses of the, of the total amount, one point seven is for supplies, two hundred fifty five thousand for special projects. And then we have contingency and in most funds, general funds, sewer fund, marketing promotion fund, just to cover any unexpected expenses that. So apart from our operating expenses, our next largest source of expenses for capital next year, between equipment and projects, we have eleven point eight million dollars set aside for capital projects and equipment, kind of similar to what we're seeing with projects. We're actually having a difficult time getting equipment as well. So I think some of the, some of the effects of the pandemic and some of the effects of kind of supply chain issues is really kind of hitting us on the project side and the equipment side. So a lot of this stuff is reappropriated from twenty twenty two and hopefully we'll be able to wrap them up in twenty twenty three. Again, all these charts can be found in the all funds chapter of the budget book. Everything you see up here in blue is replacement equipment and things we've been trying to order this year. The two most notable ones are the two dump trucks in our public works department. Twenty four thousand dollars set aside for those. I think we ordered those back in March, maybe April, and we didn't even know we were eligible to buy one until they gave us the approval in like November, when it was finally being ordered. And then I think it's finally being built in January or February. So it's been a process, but all, everything in light blue up there is kind of replacement or things that have been reappropriated from the prior year. Anytime we talk about equipment, we talk about it in terms of new equipment versus replacement equipment. Each year we do set aside funding for replacement equipment. You'll see it as a line item in the general fund, fund balance, sewer fund, fund balance called SURF, the Capital Equipment Replacement Fund. Each year we fund that a certain amount. So general funds, four hundred thousand dollars minus any equipment we purchase. So we funded a certain amount. So when the time goes, time does come to replace some of these large pieces of equipment, the funding's there. We're not using current year revenues on that. So we do have funding specific for those and what's not reappropriate the new pieces of equipment, you know, about three hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars included in there. Oh, sorry, four hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars of new equipment. And again, that includes everything from irrigation meters to a printer for downstairs or not printer, a postage meter for downstairs, traffic safety trailer, et cetera. Very similar capital projects, everything you see here in the light blue is reappropriated from the prior year. So we have five point four million dollars in reappropriate projects. And then in new projects, we have five point five million dollars. And we've talked about those at length in prior budget presentations, but definitely happy to discuss those. The only one you probably haven't seen so far is we do include the sidewalk replacement program as part of capital. So continuing to fund that at a hundred thousand dollars per year. And this final table is also in the all fun summary. And this is kind of just a summary of the final balance as far as fund balance at the end of twenty twenty three. Yeah, as I was explaining, we do anticipate spending out of fund balance to the tune of two point eight million dollars next year, but really hope that we'll be able to get some of these projects done and get be able to focus on new projects in their strategic plan in the future. So that is all I have as far as my presentation, Mr. Mayor. Recommendation is up there to open the public hearing, accept public comment and then move to continue the public hearing on the budget to next, the next city council meeting in December sixth. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council.
Thank you, Shannon. All right. With that, we're going to open it up to a public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item. All right, I'm hearing none. Are you seeing anybody online?
No comments online, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment, bring you back to council. All right. Does anybody have any questions for Shannon?
I do.
All right, go ahead, Aaron.
First, though.
What? You don't want to?
I don't have to go first.
No, but we'll let you go first. How's that? It's our privilege to let you go first because it sparks all the rest of us to.
Well, thank you, Mayor. No. Thank you. It was nice to see the the full budget together. Really the summaries, I think, really pulled it together. Because I felt, as going through the budgets before, you kind of felt a little lost just because you only see the individual thing. So it was really nice to see that the summaries come together. And it was nice to see some, like the, those, the updates to the budget, like when I was talking last, like you've cleaned up some of those bigger increases to like pull them in to be more reasonable to expectations.
And I did, I did want to point out, I had in my notes, of course, I skipped right over it. We did change the percentage change from percentage change twenty twenty three budget to estimate actuals to the twenty twenty two budget, which it was before. So that is one change that we did make.
And that, and that's awesome. That's, I think that's a more powerful tool to evaluate and it was, it was very nice. A couple of reports I think could be very effective to add into our budget just to give greater clarity to us, the community, decrease unnecessary discussion just because it's, it's their summaries. Like one of them, I think is a summary by, for the current year, just by the different departments and then totals.
Sure.
How they can come together. I think that could be more powerful and it pulls it all together. And plus you can kind of reconcile the detail back to, to that lead summary. I do like your verbiage. I missed it in my review with talking about the payroll thing. That's very helpful. I don't know if we want to have a graph or a chart of the payroll, kind of like, I guess what I was imagining was like a twenty twenty two estimate. And then when you're looking at twenty three, it's a little easier to explain going backwards, but you have total twenty three. Then you have a column for new heads, new column for the market and performance adjustments and then everything else, just I think that helped give, helps give clarity, especially when we're looking at, like at the all funds budget. Personal salaries going up twelve percent. I think that's pretty substantial, like it, on, on the surface, it's very substantial compared to what everybody around us is looking at. So it's, it's nice to give clarity, just so it's like, oh, sweet. We're given twelve percent pay raises. It's like, no, there's, there's a lot to it. So I don't know if that's something that we could look to add, just because I think it, it makes the budget stronger in presenting to everybody. Amazing on supply costs going up.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Like what is going on there? Can you kind of just give a clarity on the differences between purchased professional services, purchased prop services and other purchased services? Because you know, as a collective, it looks like they're only going up like five and a half percent. And so it's not as scary as this, these big double digit increases and decreases.
Oh, sure. Oh, let me pull that back up. Oh, so the question is just different, a purchase professional services during, compared to like purchased property services?
Sorry. Oh, you're talking to me.
Yeah.
I'm just waiting to, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, what was that?
I want to clarify what the question was.
Professional services versus like property services?
Yes.
Yeah. So professional services, that's things that like professional development, right? Engineering, auditing fees.
Yeah.
Margaret's already had me.
She was talking.
Professional services are kind of like a profession. You're, you're hiring somebody to do something. That's a kind of a professional or educational nature. Purchased property services deal with like property maintenance services. Somebody's cleaning, you're hiring janitorial work, utilities. And then the other category was other purchase services, which are kind of, or like fixed charges, insurance. It's a service that you're purchased. Professional and it's not property.
Perfect. We're with the, the EV hookups that we're doing, I saw in two places, I think. I see on the, on the CapEx that we got the seventy thousand, but that's not all of it, right? There's, there's more.
Yeah, so that's been an interesting project. So we received the seventy thousand dollars from Charge Ahead Colorado. Excel enrolled us in a program or awarded us a program called the Electric Vehicle Supply Infrastructure Program. So they'll actually pay for all of the infrastructure to go in. And so we don't have to pay.
It won't even go through this budget.
It doesn't even go through the budget. So we got seventy thousand from Charge Ahead. So then all, a lot of our costs will be offset by that, but Excel, I don't think they pay to us directly. They'll just put in the improvements. And then they'll own that, they'll own everything up to the charging station. And because we're, went through that program, we actually get a, not subsidized rate, but a discounted rate on electricity for electric vehicles. So it'll be built at a lower rate than actually what we pay for our building electricity for the vehicles, depending upon what time people are using it. And then we will bill customers per that rate. So for the charging stations, you'll see a revenue on the general fund side, but also expense and non departmental.
And is that rate a temp, how, is it a certain period?
Through Excel? Yeah, absolutely.
Better rate?
Yeah, I think as long as they own the infrastructure. Now the rate may change, but yeah, they'll bill us that rate because you know, they're trying to incentivize electric vehicles. So we get a per kilowatt rate, depending upon what time people charge. Middle of summer, dead of heat, it is going to be very, very expensive for people to charge due to peak demand. Some other off times will be kind of more cheap and reasonable. So they always do things to try to encourage behavior that uses kind of less, and this is their way to kind of do that.
Is that, those varying rates depending on conditions, is that to the end user buying the energy? Are they paying it flex or are they playing fat flat?
It's, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of up to us to determine what they will eventually pay, but they'll be billing us the rate. So I think, yeah, I think we would, we would put in something in place that like, if it is peak demand.
The infrastructure will allow us to, to make sure we're efficiently billing.
Yeah, and I think that's.
From fourteen cents kilowatt to a buck twenty kilowatt.
Just depending on timing. Okay. Where, and where's that revenue in our budget?
Sure.
Because I see, just, I, I asked that just because back in the back in the budget.
Of course. So it should be.
Like back in, sorry, let me find it.
So general.
Back in the non departmental.
Oh, yeah.
That's, I, I see the twenty five thousand for energy, but I don't see any revenue to offset. Where's, where's that in the budget?
Yeah. So it actually, and I did pull up our budget. So it should be in our, our general front summary. That's a charge for service, which is typically category thirty four on our revenues. So I apologize if anyone's watching this, watching me scroll. One one oh thirty four oh one, twenty five thousand dollars. We don't know what the revenue is going to be the first year or expenses are going to be. So that's kind of just like a ballpark. We'd rather overestimate than underestimate. But if it is over that, then we'll have to come back for a supplemental budget amendment at that point too. But that's just kind of a number I, we threw in there. Yeah, we'll get ninety percent.
Yeah.
But for.
Where is it in this?
Uh, so that.
Oh, so you've got, okay, at least so you're, at least you're covering your costs, which is great.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
Yeah. And with the stations we're purchasing, it's ninety percent revenue to the city. The other ten percent is to the vendor. So it seems like most of these charging stations, they do cover their cost, at least assuming people are not charging too much during peak demand hours, et cetera.
It'll be, it'll be fun to see how that goes.
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, a little off topic, do you know if we'll be able to change the billing rate with those charging stations based on time?
Yeah, yeah. And it's, it seems like in a lot of other places, they'll actually, it's kind of like punitive if you're charging and your car is fully charged, your rate skyrockets because they want some turnover at that spot. Yeah.
Or per five minute increments of leaving your car parked.
Yeah, yeah.
And you just unlock the port and it doesn't recognize it and you don't get charged, but I digress.
That's, that's good to know there's a way around that for electric vehicle owners. Yeah.
It's not really a budget item, but just since we're talking about the specific, the electric charging. I am curious, how do we get on, for lack of a better term, the map that shows that we're there? How, I mean, we can build it, but how are people going to know that we have it?
Yeah, absolutely. I think there is an app for ChargePoint, the, the vendor that we're using that will show.
Vendor does it?
Those that, yeah. And I think if anyone's, you know, traveling electric vehicles, then they pull it all up and it'll show them where it's at. Hopefully we'll get one of those sweet EV charging stations logo on the I seventy exit.
There you go.
That'd be helpful too, if we don't already have one, because we do have a charging station dinosaur journey. The only difference is these ones will charge in under an hour while that one takes four or five hours.
Yeah, I just wondered how long it'll take us to get on that.
Yeah.
I've not seen him on Google Maps. ChargePoint will do. I've not seen him on Google Maps. Uh, ChargePoint will do it. And then I don't know how, and I once again, I come from a Tesla viewpoint. ChargePoints will show up on Tesla. I don't know how. I am assuming ChargePoint.
Right.
Sends that information over to them.
Yeah, and we could add it to probably.
Do we have to work with C dot to get signage?
Yeah, I think.
C dot does not do signage or charging points.
Well, I'm just saying, he was, he was saying that it was, it was out there on the, on the road. It's like.
Oh, yeah.
Is that what you were saying that like?
Oh, yeah.
With restaurant, like this exit has.
EV, yeah, you'll you'll see them. Yeah, so I I haven't looked into the process yet.
But that's smart. I like the idea. It'd be great to make sure that we.
Yeah, it'd be nice to roll it out at the same time.
The cost for that to get that done, because it'd be smart to.
Oh, absolutely.
The other side of it is, or we could work with our contract with Family Health West with that billboard and require them to take a bottom. That billboard, when they renew, because that's renewed in.
That's next year, Mr.
March or April, you know, say, hey, let's require that as part of the lease that it has some.
With them, don't we?
At the bottom.
We remind, well, you remember that when we have.
A long narrow billboard.
Well, I think that that's a good idea. Wouldn't we talk?
Because when we renew our contract, I mean, we could look at that too. If we can't get one out on the highway, that's a main one.
Nice symbol.
Right.
It seems like charging stations are a thing that people.
It's a priority of the state. Yeah. Yeah, it's definitely a priority of.
So it's better to get it coming Utah this way.
Right, absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to be proactive on getting this on the map, however that map plays out.
We'll have to look into the signage, man. That's a great question.
So we're, we're, we're digressing from the um this item on the agenda. Um, so is there other budgetary? You got your hand. Okay, go ahead. All right.
More. I was seeing that.
He said, sure, go ahead.
This is awesome. You go.
I was seeing with with looking at the different de- departmental um P and L's. It just seems, it seems inconsistent. I'm hoping I can get a good clear story of like, I know we have a couple additional heads, but. You know, on some health insurance is going up sixty-five, some's going down five, some's going fifteen. So, you know, like generally speaking, I'm expecting if there's no new hires. That costs are going to be, of course, like twenty percent year over year, but um. But how, how are we making sure that we take care of that because benefit, health benefits in particular? Make sure that we can control that cost and and manage it.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great question. Um, yeah, we're very excited. Um, as we discussed our last presentation about getting the three percent. Increase from C E B T. It's almost unheard of. And it seems like each year they're like, okay, well, next year is going to be the year, the large increase as well. Went down this year. Uh, but yeah, I think a lot of the health insurance um changes is due maybe just to fluctuation in personnel. Uh, unfortunately, we have seen some vacancies this year. Um, so whenever someone leaves a position, we actually budget it for at the higher health insurance rate. Just in case of the uh person that gets hired for that position um needs family health insurance, we're not under budgeting as compared to over budgeting. And when you look at estimated actuals too, you'll probably see, um, sometimes we don't spend that money. It's because we're budgeting for the family rate. Um, which is twenty twenty-three thousand, almost twenty-three thousand compared to the single rate of nine thousand. And that money never gets spent because the person just enrolls in single uh health insurance as compared to family. So always trying to cover our bases there. We also maybe have some changes um in personnel on how, you know, salary or benefit expenses are allocated per department. We've went through some changes recently in our public works department where we had more personnel in irrigation. We actually re or mountain water. Reallocated them uh to different programs. So that can kind of, that can kind of adjust some of the personnel expenses and also the fringe benefit expenses. Like how much we pay for health insurance or FICA, etc. So um it probably, I'd say it probably devaries. But you know, with some turnover that we've received or we've seen, we always budget for the higher rate health insurance. And we just had open enrollment too. So we probably see a lot of changes towards the end of the year.
Okay, appreciate it.
Of course.
I know what last meeting the mayor brought up and we approved for for iPads. Is that in the twenty-two budget and the twenty-three budget?
I think we're going to discuss that part of the manager's update unless you want to discuss it now.
Oh, we I could, we can save it. I just wanted to.
We'll do that city manager's report.
Yeah.
Kind of give him something to do.
Yeah.
Probably didn't seem a good job here. Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, he's doing great. But yeah, we got, we got quotes and everything. We'll cover it. I think I might even get an iPad.
Has twenty-two more posted.
They're just indicator notes. I think a lot of these are.
And I'm grateful for this. As I'm going through the budget, I'm like, oh, I'm sure Aaron Scott this.
There you go.
Details. So thanks.
It's like this, I was excited to review this.
Yeah, this is your love language.
So no, this was, this is a lot of fun to do. I got the answer. I, oh, no, I think I'm done that I can, I can save them for you. No, I I I do, I'm done with questions. I go, just to go back like the P and L by department, I think it would be very valuable for us to put in. So I hope the software. I'd hope your software does it. Has it? You just need to choose that reporter, easy build it. I just think it's. You know, my experience with budgeting is you try to give enough information to where, you know, it. It communicates appropriately, so we don't get. Lower valued questions.
Sure.
We want to keep it to the good detail, but like just having that, like having that summary was awesome to make it go through. And like if we have these other ones, I think it just gives good clarity to where it's like people can. Get further to the meat and potatoes a lot faster than um. Confusion or just.
Right, right.
You being a little lost because it's, it's a great big budget, but no, I really appreciate uh what you guys have done and it's, it's looking great.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm done.
All right. Well, we can always come back to because we haven't, you know, made our motion yet. Any other questions? For Shannon or staff related to the budget, related to the budget. Let's keep that word in there.
No.
All right. There are no other questions. Do we have a motion on this item?
I I like, I was thinking that. Where's that? Where's that motion for me?
Pulling it up right. Oh, of course.
You have to continue the public hearing. It's on page. What is it?
It's two oh four. You're so close.
Okay.
Mayor, I recommend that we continue the uh the budget to public hearing on for. I continue the public hearing on the twenty-twenty-three annual budget until the December sixth uh city council meeting.
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, would you please poll council?
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Bremen?
Yes.
Counselor Purser?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
And Counselor Cry?
Hi.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Shannon. Thanks, Margaret, for being the backup.
Yes, thank you for being here.
All right. If we don't have any administrative agenda, so we'll move into our city manager's report. Mike, I think the first question is iPads. I think that's what.
Yeah, so we.
I told him no, Mike. So Matthew is already upset at me, so.
So we did, we did get the pricing uh through Verizon who we we contract with for the 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 mobile devices and the data. With so the larger iPads that are about thirteen inches, I believe is what they are. Um, those are cost thirteen hundred. Uh, each. And then the cases are two hundred and thirty. So you're about uh one thousand five hundred and thirty for each device, which is about. Ten thousand seven hundred and ten for all seven of you. Um, unfortunately, we were looking in just kind of our our, the typical line items for IT for this year. We've had some. Some higher expenses this year, so we don't have that just sitting in the IT budget for the for this year to be able to move. Um, we could either, we so we could go a couple routes. I mean, you, we could do a supplemental where we do move funds to. Um, at a future meeting so that we can cover that cost this year, or we can insert it into next year's budget. I mean, we're getting close on. Just depends on timing, assuming that everybody wants uh the upgraded device. Uh, just so you're for your, so you're aware, right now, the current devices you have, we we have a a data plan that's twenty gigabytes per. Uh, it gets up to that per month. That's uh that costs twenty dollars. It's nineteen fifty-five a month. Um, at the government rate, we can go to unlimited, which is just essentially double. It's it's forty dollars, thirty-nine ninety-nine a month. Uh, on an annual basis for everybody. If we switch everybody to unlimited for the whole year. That would, that's an additional cost of uh six sixteen hundred and eighty dollars. So you're looking at, you know, a pretty minimal. Uh, cost for the, for the year, for the month. Uh, you're, you're just going up from two forty to four eighty. So basically doubling. That's for, sorry, that's for the year for each of you, but yeah. So we can, i- it's kind of up to you, uh, up to you. I mean, you don't have the, you know, one of the things to consider, we replaced the. iPads that you currently have in twenty twenty. Those were, those were new in twenty twenty with uh COVID relief funds. We helped you uh upgrade. Uh, the devices, but they were the same size. It was a small size. So it makes it a little difficult when you're looking at large maps and those types of things. It's the only tool. Uh, that you're, that you have and are provided uh through the city to do um all of your city work on. So. Uh, I think that's, that's worth considering. I think uh it's something we can do. We can either, it's it's up to you all if you want us to. Prepare a supplemental um to to move funds, uh appropriate funds this year to do it, or if you'd like to just. Us to work on before next hearing, adding it into the uh twenty twenty-three proposed budget.
All right, discussion, anybody? Aaron's got his hand up first.
Um, two, two questions. One is, do you have Apple pencils in that budget?
I just thought of that and we don't. So those are, I can't remember if we. Yeah, I think so.
But they're, it's a powerful like this, it's what you're proposing is.
Yeah, they're different. Yeah, aren't the new Apple pencils, these won't work on the new ones.
This is an Apple pencil two and there's improved technology in it that it is worthwhile to have it.
Right.
Um, and so this is the set, what you're proposing to, you're talking about right now is the setup that I have for my personal and business use.
Right.
Phenomenal. It's awesome. And um, so. Uh, so I think we need to add that there. And then is there, you know, with these other iPads, can we recycle those to other? City employees that we don't want to just, I wouldn't want these just all get shoved in a drawer.
Oh, of course. Yeah, so with.
What's, what's the value of of? Allowing others to use it that those sizes are more appropriate for them.
Yeah, what we, we'll do what we, what we've done in the past. So in twenty twenty, we, we, we updated certain iPads. That certain employees might, that could use. Usually it's people in the field. If we don't have those. Um, we, i- if we have equipment that we don't have a need for and it still has a life, I I mean, we're talking vehicles to. Something just like this. We put it on, we can put them on gov deals and then people bid on them. That way we're, it's a fair opportunity for anybody to buy. And we're not just picking and choosing who we're selling equipment to.
I'm in agreement.
We did. Yeah, that's a good point. So Margaret's saying that for a number of years, when we first started, we had unlimited plans for data for all the iPads. After Verizon looked back at that, those years of usage, um, we weren't even getting close to the the twenty gigabytes for for each of the users on a regular basis. So the only reason we switched it down. Um, again, y- you're talking a difference of twenty a month per, per user. Um, it's something that, I mean, it's up to you if you, if you, if you want to have it, so you don't have to. You know, if you want to have it and pay that extra expense, or if you want to keep it at the the twenty uh gigabytes, you know, you're, it's a small savings. But.
Charge you extra if you go over.
Right. And if if that were to occur, we can always bump any even individual one up or it's, it's up to you.
Trending on that, like what's, I I feel like we've been here long enough now that you kind of know, you know, what our usage is.
Yeah, I think we've only had one anomaly and that's it. And it was. And it was.
Always staying under like once or twice a year we go over. It's still going to be.
Still saving money, yeah.
To do the.
The whole year.
Yeah. The twenty, so the one month.
We can look back over the last six months and see what we've done, right?
We can do that. Staff can let us know what they think is most economical for us to do. We don't have to make that decision.
Right.
Yes.
Right. So I mean, that's back into the weeds where I don't think we.
It's a difference of, just to put it in perspective, it's a difference of a thousand six hundred and eighty for the year for all of you. That's, that's the additional cost for unlimited. Um.
How much?
We've had one, I mean, in in the, in the one time, which was a settings issue. Um, I think that was, I mean, that was very minimal of the. Additional compared to, I mean, it was a lot less.
Five hundred dollars for that month.
Over again, it's a public flogging.
Right.
Oh, no.
No, this council doesn't do that.
I mean, the, the purpose of it is if you're, you know, making sure you have the ability to, no, no matter where you are and 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 when you need to review. I mean, you're reviewing large packets. It could be at night, it could be on weekends, you could be traveling, whatever, wherever it may be, and you want to be able to have that. Uh, ability. Now wifi is fairly common, but there could be times and certain people in certain situations may not. Maybe in times where you don't have a good connection and you need that. So.
We can always make that change later, though.
You can.
Hey, where we are and we decide in a few months.
I will say, I've only, I've only hooked mine to like outside wifi once since I've, since I've started.
Yeah.
And so I mean, if, and I've been all over the place with it. I, it's gone all over with me. So if that's.
The guilty party.
We know.
Yeah.
It was after my kneecap shift.
This year's budget.
That's why I'm asking, like if I, you know, if I'm consistently trending over, then.
It is and what.
Yeah. That's my take too.
Yeah, whatever's good. Yeah, whatever's the easiest budget for you guys to put it in.
No, they're saying about the budget.
We're talking about the.
Purchase it this year or wait till next.
The fifteen thousand for all the new equipment.
That's what they're asking.
Yeah, like it's not an emergency. We don't have to have.
Do you rather have it in last year's budget or?
Doesn't matter.
You don't care.
It's.
Yeah, then do it sooner than there's no.
We're also, one thing we've noticed because there's, um, we used to, we used to have a few of us that utilize these at the same time. And so. Things you would run into, we might run into sooner, we might be able to help. And so we're looking at the potential of having. One or a couple in the city manager's office to be able to be using at the same time. So we can, we can kind of help with. With some of the usage that you're seeing in some ways. Um, I think, I know there's an app that most of you are using, but it's an app we've been using for many years. There could be. Many, there could be better opportunities for doing your notes on the PDFs. I'm sure there's more than that option and. Things like that that we just really haven't looked into because um unless a a council member has in the past, we, we, we kind of. Uh, haven't been using them as regularly uh in the, for for about four years now, so.
Oh, do we, we probably need a motion to direct staff, correct? Would you want a motion that we?
Well, I think, I think we've got the direction because you would approve, you would approve a supplemental. Budget amendment of some sort. So that that'll come at a future meeting and we'll, and then we'll place the orders.
So it sounds like you're getting direction to do it this year.
Um, well, i- it's the same as what they have now. It just would be on a different device. So, yeah, yeah, we're, I don't think we'll have an additional on that. Yeah. Okay, so yeah, we got the direction we need, then there'll be a formal approval of the, of the moving of the money. So. And then the only other thing I have is a request when you're in council reports and actions, which is right after this. Um, it was, it's not on the agenda. It d- it doesn't need to be on the agenda, but you've, you've talked about this in the past and we'd love a motion on. Assuming you're still wanting to cancel the December workshop, which is the fourth Tuesday of the month in December. Um, that was brought up as wanting to cancel that when we talked at a previous meeting of kind of the remaining meetings for the year. Um, we just will be putting out the December calendar and uh rather than making a change to that calendar after the December sixth meeting, if you could. If that's something, we have no plans for items for that workshop. Traditionally, we have canceled that one quite a bit. Because of schedules and different things like that. So um, we still have the November workshop. Um, and I did want to. And I did want to, we, we did kind of throw that out there during the budget, but that's the only other question I have is, are there any specifics related to the budget that you would like to discuss at the November workshop? We have no more to add, but we would, if there's more that you would like to discuss at the, at the November workshop, which is next Tuesday before the, we conclude the hearing on December sixth.
We have items on that workshop.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna review the updates to the, I don't, I think it'll be a very short discussion because we've had the discussion, but you all wanted to have one more chance to review updates to the housing authority bylaws that you gave us direction on. So we will put those out so you can probably send them out sooner than the, but they'll be at least in the packet. But Mary Elizabeth has made those changes and we're just going through some revisions to, to finalize those. But that, that won't be a long, I don't anticipate that to be a long discussion item. That's really the only other item we have planned for the November workshop. But we have, so we have time allotted in case there were any further questions about the budget. But there's no additional information that we are planning to present unless you have questions or something you want more discussion on. You can, yeah, of course.
All right.
That's it. It's just if you can make a formal motion to, if, if that, if you still want to cancel when you're going through your updates, so.
Right. So do I want to move that to the beginning? Cause we've got executive session in here. And do we want to come out of executive session and have to do another motion?
You don't, you, no, you have a there, there's still something before executive session.
Well, no, I know that, but I'm saying because we've already approved this agenda.
You can make a motion at any time in a meeting.
Okay. All right. Then we're, then let's start with that one about the December workshop. Does anybody want to be here for a workshop or do we have a motion to cancel the December workshop?
Mayor, I move we cancel the December workshop. Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other discussion?
Something going on around there?
Nothing that can.
Yeah, would you please pull counsel?
Yes.
Counselor Bremen.
Yes.
Counselor Purser.
Yes.
Counselor Williams. Counselor Cry.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, that's off the list. Now we'll move into our city manager formal evaluation schedule. So everybody have a chance to look at that. I don't know if everybody realizes that we put it out to public, we get public feedback. And then we do Mike's formal review. Usually at the first meeting in, in January.
Yep. And, and if I could just add, the, the form that's in this for approval is not the only tool you have to use. And we've discussed at the informal, uh, of many other things that I will provide you. But the form has to be the same form that goes to the public per our charter. It goes to the public and a, a form that council uses. That does not mean you can't ask for additional information or discussion and those types of things. So just as an example, I'll be providing some of the CML data when, in regards to pay and a couple of other studies that you'll have. You'll have my contract. You will have, I discussed with you all, it was provided last year, but it was part of a, a certain point in my credentialing where I have a credentialing plan that I turn in with a international city county manager association. So I can share that with you all. The other piece is the, I did a three hundred and sixty-five degree evaluation that was provided to the previous council and I'd be happy to share that with you all. It was just done about a year ago or a little less. It was part of the credentialing process that I go through. You do one after a five-year period. And that was a, an outside company that did it and sent surveys to direct reports, indirect reports, the current council, partner agencies, all those that, and, and I can, I'd be happy. So there'll be other things to share, but this, this form, the reason why it's kind of stayed the same for so long is it's worked fairly well for the, when you have to have one form for the public and council, but I just want you to know you're not limited to that information or, or that tool in, in the review process.
All right. Any other questions or comments on that one or have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move we direct staff to publish the charter mandated public notice. Approve the attached evaluation form and have staff make it available for use by the public. Schedule an executive session for December twentieth, twenty twenty-two to prepare the evaluation and executive session on January third, twenty twenty-three to present the annual formal evaluation to the city manager.
Second.
All right, we got first and the second. Any other discussion?
Counselor Bremen. Counselor Purser.
Yes.
Counselor Williams. Counselor Cry.
Hi.
Council, counselor Miller.
Yes.
And counselor Hansi. Motion passes six zero.
All right, our next item under, well, before we go into that, let's do a council updates, council reports and actions there. And then we'll go into an executive session. So we'll, Janine's shaking her head yes. So we'll start with Janine. How's that?
Yeah, um, I got to go to my first arts and culture board meeting and you pretty much heard what our meeting discussed or what one of the major topics was at that meeting, but it was great to be part of that board and they are tweaking the art stroll and so it's going to be a little bit different this, this coming year, still in March, but it's going to be held at Our Lady, whatever it's called. What is it called? Is it?
Old Catholic church.
No, the, the Airbnb. Okay, yes. Yeah, and it's going to be just a little bit different, a little more high, high-end idea. So look for more information on that. Downtown advisory board meeting is tomorrow because it has now been moved to the third Wednesday of each month. And livability is this week too. So that's it. I've got nothing else.
We had a joint tourism meeting with Palisade, which was pretty cool. And I could probably talk about it a little bit more than I could, but basically we're coming up with a little booklet. It kind of talks about Palisade and Fruta and some of the trails and things like that. And there's some funny, is that the, the state tourism that was giving us that extra funding? I, I wasn't kind of too sure who exactly who that was. But anyway, we're being included in that. Another way to get more mountain bikers here.
Grand Valley Regional Transport Board met last Monday. I was in jury duty and unable to go, but the agenda didn't look too heavy. So and F Yak met yesterday. I didn't know it was happening. So anyway, so I missed both my board meetings.
Amy, how's that? Amy?
Wow. Um, I, so historical board, we, the the applicant that you saw with the being on the registry was the main topic at that meeting, which was cool to kind of hear about fruiters because those processes are different and like what it looks like is different in different towns and different. So that was educational for me to learn what fruit is, looks like. Planning and zoning was the same. That was the only thing, like we had a twenty-six minute meeting. It was
Record.
Phenomenal. We, we were in and out so fast. And then the AMGD meeting, the Associated Members for Growth and Development. I went there, they thought they were going to have all kinds of questions for me. And then the Grand Junction kind of was more the focal point of all of the unrest. So that was handy. I only had like five minutes at the end of the meeting. I was like took it and ran. But they are planning on, the HBA is gonna have like this mixer and have all of the, after we get our our building inspector established, they're going to host a mixer and invite a lot of organizations. And so that'll be really cool. So, but that was kind of a relief, not, no heat there. And then I will be out of town for the December fifth meeting. So I don't know if that's anything relevant, but I think that's all I need. That's all I think that's all I got.
All right, thank you, Aaron.
Uh, park and rec. Color scheme you will love, blue and white for prospect, prospector park. They'll take one to two months clean or will be completed in one or two months. I can't remember, but that's on the, in the works to fix that equipment. To get that upgraded. Reed Park, I think the number one thing that came from there is a merry-go-round is staying. Well, they're going to keep that, the new, they're going to have a new one, but it, we will still have a merry-go-round because that was the number one.
Yeah.
Can't suck. I don't know, we kind of chatted about what to do with the old merry-go-round. You know, it's, it's, I think it's
Jeff to, to make an art.
Yeah.
So they can get flung into buildings instead of.
So they're going for their third try for the GoCo grant on the eighteenth. Twenty-nine, there's community feedback to start on skate park stuff. Fruit of Dog Park to open up February or March, and they'll have two areas, not necessarily big or small, but I think they're getting some direction from people who have had created successfully dog parks to have two areas and software upgrade at the rec center is going good. That's all. There's a lot in it, but in the meeting, but it was good.
Uh, as a bad fruit of chamber board rep, uh, because I was in Denver and missed that meeting. And then GJEP is tomorrow at seven fifteen or seven thirty.
If you run into that again, let me know.
Okay.
It still pops up on my schedule, so.
Thank you.
All right, that sounds good. I didn't have any board meetings that I was at. I did want to. I know Janine and I have an interview for the Arts and Culture Board and the question was raised about I don't know if it's more communication or interview process as far as having like the, the chair of a board input on that. And I want to address Janine on that one because I sent an email and I
I got, I did see yours.
And I guess I, I wanted to just let all the council know where my perspective is on it is that one of my responsibilities is appointing and then our council is ratifying it. We've talked about this in the past about not having like board chairs sit in on interviews, just because I think their role is a little different than choosing who goes on a board. That's kind of our role in that. That's why I think it's very important that both I and the chair or our liaison from this council, you know, make those decisions on that. So that's kind of, I just wanted to address that, let you know, kind of.
Yeah. Yeah. And that made a, that made a good sense. However, not however, but in addition to that, I still think, like, I've been on the flip side of that often. And like where somebody who was appointed, I didn't ever even know that they were, had, there was an application. I didn't know anything. And then they just show up at the meeting and say, oh, we're new on your, without ever knowing. So and Deb, like we talked about that. So for sure, the application is going to go out to the chair prior to the interview, but I also think it would be at least respectful of you and the council liaison to reach out to the chair after they've seen the application and just ask, do you have any reservations? Or do you have, not even reservations, just comment, do you have any comments about this application that you've seen? Like they don't have to be in the interview or anything, but I do think they're more the personal, they know more what's going on than we are ever going to within the board. Like we do our little report here and so we have a general idea, but the chair has a, a better overall feeling of what's going on there. So I do think it is valuable just to at least, we don't have, you don't have to even move on any of it, but just know if there's, what do you think? What do you guys think about just the opinion of the, of the chair person? But after they look at the application.
That's where I count on the liaison. That's kind of why I think it's important to have a liaison and be in there is that, you know, because it's really the mayor appointing and the liaison is the one that's going to say, hey, I know how this group is, how this person.
Yeah, that's
Interview and, and we both kind of had the same feeling that hope they're not a right fit. And we said, you know, no to that.
Yeah.
He's the one that's sitting in the meetings. And so that's where I count on, I think.
Okay.
This to make that decision. No, it'd be the liaison. What do you mean?
That takes the temperature of whether this person's going to really fit like with the rest of the group. I do think it is important to communicate that you have appointed a new person because we did have a similar thing with, with the, you know, the historical preservation. I knew about it clearly, but I did feel kind of bad that, you know, our, the rest of our people, we, we were just like, oh yeah, hey, you know, this is, so yeah, just communicating like, okay, you know, maybe just an email to.
I think the policy has to change to say, hey, when we appoint somebody or say we're going to appoint them that we notified everybody on the board. I think
Yeah.
Key, we have all their email addresses just to say, hey, the council appointed this person, so they're going to be coming to your meeting.
Yeah.
That would help alleviate, I think, some of that.
Yeah, yeah. I agree though, that the, I think that it's enough to have the liaison be the, the one that, you know, and I feel like you did, you did that. You know, you said, how do you feel like this person is, would fit with the group and like, I think if you get too many voices in there, that kind of muddy. Sure. And I, I definitely have that, I mean, sentiment in general, like too many is definitely too many.
I think part of it is some of the boards, especially arts and culture. I know they're very passionate about what they do. I mean, they're, they're very involved and they're different than probably a lot of other boards because they're really active as far as in the community. So I think that's
Well, it was even mentioned to me that in the past, they've never had somebody just come apply on their own, like it has been almost picked. They have been almost like, oh, you should go apply. And they're recruiting and that has
A little snuff.
And that also that, yeah. And so like, so, so that, I mean, I'm not saying that that, I'm not saying that's okay. I'm just saying that's how that has in general, how they've gotten anybody on their board is like, oh, hey, just through natural conversation, not like, not excluding people, but just like, oh, you, you know what? You're interested and you should go apply. And so then like they were talking about needing people on their board. This is my first meeting and I had just gotten that email. I'm like, oh, hey, there's a net. And they didn't have any idea. So that was where it was, I mean, it was good that I was there to let, let them know, but.
That's why we changed our policy to say, if an opening comes, we put it out for thirty days because we have had that in the past where all of a sudden, oh, somebody puts in an application and it's like, oh, they're a great fit. So we just put them into that spot instead of saying, hey, let's keep it open for thirty days. So we can get in. I remember planning was one of these probably three years ago that was, we had eight applications. So we did eight interviews for two spots. And then we put in two alternates. And so for us, opening it up for that time then allows us to get the right candidate for that.
I respect that policy. I just was like letting you know a little more background where that even came from the other day.
So I'm good with email. I mean, transparency, I'm all for that. I think that's perfect. So if we get an application and then they want to forward it to that chair, I'm, that's great. And I think us as council need to give staff direction to say, hey, once we say we're appointing somebody, let's let everybody on that board know that, hey, you've got a new person coming. So let's welcome them into that board.
Great. Yeah, I think that's a fantastic idea.
So that's the only discussion I wanted to have. So I just wanted to.
Like control.
Make sure we're all.
Just real quick before we move on from the reports, the three of us went to the community.
Are you pulling your can?
Yes.
Well, I didn't, I never said I was done. I just kind of got swept over when I was at the end of what I was saying. But the three of us did go to the community hospital when they opened up their childcare center. It was pretty cool. Yeah, a lot of good representation there.
Some bit of a hit to the twenty-five or six thousand seats. It'll be great. It's
It was good.
It's awesome to see private sector solving their problems and attacking them. That's what I like.
And
We would have really loved seeing him talk with Ray Scott about the state budget. That was ridiculous. He was like
We were both having fun. We were two peas in a pod.
Mike was going to say something.
I was just going to say the day before, uh, the community hospital hosted a, a special event with invites to some community leaders. And Dan, Karis and I attended and it was about childcare and the group that they actually worked with. So the, the group that helped them, you know, kind of create that. And it was, it was, it was really beneficial and, and, and good for us to learn and also make some of those contacts with some groups that we can connect with some of our larger employers that have been looking at that as well. So because it's a, it's, it's an outside group that connect with some of our larger employers that have been looking at that as well. So because it's a, it's it's an outside group that community worked with that provided a lot of assistance and technical help for them to get to that point. But really, so so we're just the day before you were at that, we 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 were able to attend that meeting and it was super beneficial.
Invite look great. Because you worked on it. Invite was picked. All right. With with that, is there any other council reports that we need?
I guess I'll report that Fruit of Monument High School hosted the regional first robotics competition this Saturday and it was a people from all over Western Colorado. It's good to see lots of people having fun over science and in our little town.
Shallity took third.
Wow.
All right. All right, hearing no more. We're going to move into our item B, executive session. So this is discussion, a possible action to consider a motion to convene an executive session for under CRS section 2464024A for the purpose of discussing the purchase of real property for a public parking lot and additional civic building space. So I will need a motion to move into executive session.
Mayor, I move to convene an executive session under CRS section 246204 4024A for the purpose of discussing the purchase of real property or a public parking lot and additional civic building space.
Nice. Okay. All right, we got first and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Could you pull counsel?
Counselor Purser.
Yes.
Counselor Williams. Counselor Cry.
Hi.
Counselor Miller.
Affirmative.
Counselor Hancy. Counselor Bremen.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.